Welcome to the City Council's December 22 special City Council meeting. This is a hybrid meeting with City Council, city staff and members of the public participating in City Council chambers in accordance with public health guidelines for in-person meetings and participating remotely to promote social distancing in this federal, state and local emergency. Mayor Woolison is recovering from an illness and will be participating virtually this evening. First, I'd like to take roll call. I would like to introduce City Council members and staff present. Mayor Jen Woolison, City Council members Drew Combs, Ray Mueller and Betsy Nash. Staff present include City Manager Justin Murphy, City Attorney Nira Doherty and City Clerk Judy Heron. Ms. Heron, would you please provide instructions to the City Council and members of the public on how the meeting will proceed?
Yes, thank you Vice Mayor. So again echoing a welcome to our special December 22nd meeting for members of the public who wish to provide comment on our agenda item this evening. After the Vice Mayor calls for public comment on the item. For those participating virtually, we ask that you engage that hand feature in the bottom of your screen. If you're calling in from a landline or a cellphone, you can press star nine. For anyone in person, you can complete a speaker card at the back table and then just return it to the clerk's desk. And that concludes my instructions at this time. Vice Mayor, you may continue.
Thank you, Ms. Heron. Next item on the agenda, item C is the study session. Study sessions are an opportunity for city staff to introduce an item that will be, that will require policy direction from the City Council in the near future. City staff will provide a brief presentation. I will then call for public comment. After public comment, the City Council will discuss the matter interactively with staff. The City Council will not take an action on this item addressed in the study session. The City Council may provide direction to city staff for preparation of additional analysis for information necessary when the item returns to the City Council for action. At this time, Ms. Heron, can you please call for public comment? And public comment at this time is limited to two minutes.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. I'd actually like to invite first Tom Smith, our principal planner. I believe he has a presentation. So Tom, you should be getting an alert to be promoted to panelist if you couldn't go ahead and accept that.
Good evening, Vice Mayor Taylor, Mayor Woolson, members of the City Council. I'm Tom Smith, Principal Planner with the Community Development Department and have a brief presentation for you that I will begin sharing. And with me this evening are members of the city staff who are part of the Housing Element Update Team. Staff also from M Group, the city's Housing Element Update Consultant and also staff from ESA, the Housing Element Update Environmental Consultant. So as mentioned, tonight's meeting is a continuation of the December 6th study session to provide feedback on potential zoning changes as part of the Housing Element Update Project and to provide any additional feedback on the working draft of the housing element that was discussed at the previous meeting. No actions will be taken this evening, but staff will be using comments from the meeting to continue revising the draft housing element and also to draft zoning ordinance amendments, specific plan amendments and ordinances to rezone certain housing opportunity sites and increase the densities and development standards associated with those densities for some of the city's existing residential zoning districts. Very brief background, this is a little bit of a repeat from the previous meeting, but shortened up here. Menlo Park's general plan was last updated in 2016 and in the spring of 2021, the city started work on the Housing Element Update Project to update its required general plan housing element for the planning period from 2023 to 2031 and to create opportunities for approximately 3,000 new housing units across the city as required by our Regional Housing Needs Assessment, which we call RENA. Accounting for all of the above moderate income units that are already in the city's pipeline, the city really needs to plan for 1,490 new affordable units. And that, that is the basis for this Housing Element Update Project and the zoning changes that we're looking at here. The city is also updating its required general plan safety element and preparing a new environmental justice element. And so collectively with the update to the housing element, we refer to this all as the Housing Element Update Project. The housing element in particular does need to be adopted by the city by January 31st of this coming year. So we're studying the potential for 4,000 net new residential units to meet those approximately 1,500 affordable units that, that we need to meet to accommodate our RENA. And that would happen through a mix of development types like 100% affordable projects, market rate housing with the required BMR housing integrated or developments with a mix of market and lower income housing. There are five key zoning strategies that we're looking at as part of this plan. So that would be to increase densities in the El Camino Real downtown specific plan area and remove the residential cap of 680 units. It would be also to increase density bonuses that are permitted through the affordable housing overlay to allow for up to 100 dwelling units per acre on a site. Rezoning commercial sites to allow for mixed use development that would include residential, removing the minimum lot size to achieve 30 dwelling units per acre for our three lots that are located around downtown and allow our three sites over two acres in size to have a density of 20 dwelling units per acre and reuse current sites that are in our existing housing element that's in effect now called the fifth cycle housing element. This is a map of the 69 sites throughout the city. They're primarily in City Council Districts 2 through 5. And here highlighted in yellow so you can see how those are dispersed. So I'll go briefly over some new information that was provided in the staff report packet since December 6th. Attachment D lists all of the 69 sites in the opportunity sites list included in the housing element. It describes seven sites that would receive a new general plan land use designation. 20 sites would be rezoned, 10 sites would have carve out overlay. And most of the sites would be eligible for the affordable housing overlay to develop up to 100 dwelling units per acre for 100% affordable housing. But I would note per the, per the direction of City Council at a prior meeting, the former flood school site would be the one site that would not be eligible for the HO, but it could utilize the state density bonus provisions. Attachment E lists changes to the general plan land use element. And so the land use designations map would be modified to reflect changes to the opportunity sites and certain other parcels to be rezoned. There would be a new office residential zoning district that would be added under the bayfront land use designation. And then the descriptions for medium density residential, high density residential, retail, commercial, professional and administrative office, office and the El Camino Real downtown specific plan land uses would be update, updated to reflect new higher densities and floor area ratios that would be permitted by the zoning changes. Attachment G describes proposed zoning ordinance text amendments. So in that attachment, there are items listed as high priority, medium priority and lower priority. And higher, high priority items are items that staff is recommending be completed first following adoption of the housing element. And that would include the update to the affordable housing overlay and the carve out overlay that would help to incentivize affordable housing at higher densities. The medium priority items, staff is recommending that those be implemented concurrent with or soon after the high priority items. And that would include modifying zoning districts to allow residential uses at increased densities with corresponding development standards increased as well. And all as identified in the, in the draft housing element. And then the lower priority items would really be cleanup items to delete references to zoning districts that would be consolidated with others and, and removed would no longer be applicable essentially throughout the city. Attachment H describes proposed zoning ordinance map amendments. And that would include rezoning certain parcels from office, the O district to office residential. As I mentioned, that would be a new district that would be created. It would rezone the former flood school site to R3. It would rezone the housing element opportunity sites that are currently zoned R3 to C2B. And it would rezone all C2 parcels except for the Sharon Heights Shopping Center to C2B as well. And then finally, we're looking at consolidating C1A, C2A, C2S and C4 parcels into the C2B district and we're recommending removal of the four, those four zoning districts. Attachment I gives an overview of the proposed specific plan text amendments. So staff is recommending that all specific plan actions would happen at the same time. But the highest priority is, is indicated for the changes to the use of parking plazas since it will require the greatest number of text and, and map changes within the, the specific plan document. And it would also enable affordable housing on city owned sites. The medium priority, apologize for that. Medium priority items would be to remove the cap on residential development, update sub-districts within the specific plan with new development standards to increase densities and allow corresponding increases in floor area ratios and height. But as I mentioned, staff's recommendation would be to, to complete all of this at once. So finally, we have a slide of tentative upcoming milestones. And so staff is recommending the upcoming tentative schedule for the Housing Element Update Project as follows. We would release the draft, we would release the final subsequent environmental impact report on January 3rd of 2023. On January 12th, the Housing Commission and Planning Commission would make recommendations on that subsequent EIR and the housing element. On January 31st, 2023, the City Council would review the subsequent EIR and housing element for adoption. And then February 9th and 10th of 2023, turning to the Environmental Justice and Safety Element Community Meetings and really getting the community involvement with those. And then for the remainder of the first quarter of 2023 would be continued advancement of the zoning changes that I just described and continue to work on the environmental justice and safety elements to respond to comments that we will receive at the community meetings and throughout the remainder of the process. And so with that, I will return it to you, Vice Mayor Taylor. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Smith for the presentation and just wanted to see if there were any clarifying questions from the council before I take public comment.
Not on the dais. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Heron, can you call for a public comment at this time?
Yes, thank you Vice Mayor. So at this time, if any member of the public wishes to provide comment on our study session item C1 related to the housing element, please engage that hand feature in the bottom of your screen. If you're calling in from a landline or cellphone, please press star nine. If participating in person, please complete a speaker card and return it to the clerk's desk. And just as a reminder, public comment on this item is limited to two minutes per speaker. And our first speaker will be Brian Kissel.
Thank you. This is Brian Kissel. I'm a resident of Menlo Park for the last 10 years. And I want to thank first the City Council, the Planning Commission and others who've all worked very hard in developing and revising our housing element. I think we're on a really good trajectory to meet the needs of the residents, the city and the state. My comment tonight is not about the housing element. It's about the process by which the housing element will be approved. I'm very shocked and disappointed and frustrated by how the District 5 representative will be selected. We were all informed that the new District 5 representative would be selected. Yesterday evening, that didn't happen. It got deferred, which is understandable. It's a lot to take in and completely makes sense to give time to, to consider the information and make an intelligent decision. However, the ultimate decision about when the, when the selection would happen is now proposed to happen after January 2nd, when Councilmember Mueller will no longer be in office. And I believe that this is completely unacceptable to not have Councilman, Councilmember Mueller, who has represented District 5 for over eight years and knows the county, knows the, the district and the, the people in the district or needs priorities better than anyone else. Not to participate in the nomination and selection of the representative for District 5 is, is really a miscarriage of our democratic process. And I would highly encourage the City Council to revisit the decision to delay the selection of the District 5 representative until after January 2nd to find a time before January 2nd. So Councilman Mueller can participate in the nomination and selection process. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. So just a reminder that we are still taking public comment on item C1 related to our housing element. And our next speaker will be Maria Deor, followed by Adina Levin.
Hello, thank you so much, Council. This is Maria Deor from District 5 and candidate for District 5 Councilmember. And I wanted to check in on the anti-displacement strategies that came up on the December 6th meeting. I know Mayor and Vice Mayor, you spoke about creating a subcommittee to develop and advance those strategies and would love to hear an update from you about where that landed. And also maybe a question for the staff. I'm not sure who to ask on this one, but I have a curiosity around the specific residential use carve outs that have been made on some of the, the sites presented in this packet. And I'm curious about why we are focusing on, on for these, why we're doing carve outs opposed to proposing changes to the zoning as that seems like it could create longer term opportunities for change if, if they came up in the future. And so just a, a clarifying question there. Thank you so much.
Thank you for your comment. So our next speaker is Adina Levin, followed by Karen Grove. And this will also be the final call for public comment on item C1.
Good evening, Mayor and Councilmembers and staff. Adina Levin, Menlo Park resident, also affiliated with Menlo Together, a local group supporting housing affordability as well as Peninsula for Everyone, which is a regional group also supporting housing for people of all incomes and tenant protections. I want to, there, there will be other people talking about tenant protections, particularly as it relates to and incorporates feedback that came in from the Bellhaven neighborhood and people who've been impacted by environmental injustices. So I will want to endorse those comments. The environmental justice element is going to be later, but the time to incorporate that feedback about safe and secure housing is now in the context of the housing element. I also wanted to focus on my comments on the opportunity to upzone and clarify the zoning of downtown to enable and, and foster the creation of affordable housing, including on the parking lots. Glad to see that being accelerated and increasing the zoning in the areas that are in the downtown and ECR plan as well as the general areas near downtown. You know, from the letter from the Department of Housing and Community Development, we do need that additional capacity. So I would encourage Council to go ahead and do that. Heard in the previous meeting that we may need to update our EIR in order to do this. And if that is needed, we should do that. We should have done it before. And if not, we should do it now in order to be able to have this service rich area to be able to support housing for people of all income levels. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Our next speaker is Karen Grove, followed by Jenny Michelle.
Hi, good evening. Karen Grove, resident of Menlo Park in District 5. I am commenting on tenant protections. A lack of tenant protection, strong tenant protections is an identified contributing factor to fair housing issues and homelessness. There's tons of data to support this, including in our own drafts, draft housing element. According to the Anti-Displacement Coalition of San Mateo County, a local just cause for eviction ordinance is one of the most powerful tools our cities can implement to prevent evictions. And this is also supported by data. And so preventing no cause evictions will affirmatively further fair housing and also prevent homelessness. So we recommend extending the protections of the 2019 Tenant Protection Act of California by enacting an ordinance to require just cause for eviction and have that protect tenants with any tenure. So for however long they've lived in their home. In addition, we would like to see relocation assistance equal to four months rent paid for by the landlord for all no fault evictions. This tenant relocation assistance can prevent episodic homelessness and it creates a cost to landlords who choose to use excessive rent increases as a way to evict people without cause, without explicitly evicting them without cause. We have anecdotal evidence from trusted community based organizations that scores of local evictions are done in ways that are not actually enforceable. And for that reason, it's really important that we also adopt a program of robust, regular, in-person culturally competent tenant education and that we collect data on eviction so we can hold landlords accountable. And if possible, we should try to provide a right to legal representation for tenants who are facing eviction. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. So next is Jenny Michelle, followed by Pam Jones.
Good evening, Mayor, Councilmembers, staff, neighbors. My name is Jenny Michelle from the Coleman Place Neighborhood Block, longtime resident of District 3 on Willow Road and a recovery and homeless teacher. The changes to the general plan are not material in nature. And where's the meat? I'm concerned and disappointed. One, we failed our fifth housing element by building 788% of above moderate housing supply and only 15.4% of moderate over an eight-year period. Are we adding those shortfalls to our sixth cycle? Why not? Our loaded needs have only increased. We failed to notate the failure, what drove it and how this element corrects those faults, like addressing our large minimum lot side, size for zoned our parcels. Two, ensure the 90 affordable units on the flood site are a part of the housing element. The city owned parking lots are set to increase density for 100% affordability product. Three, commit to tenant protections by extending just cause eviction protections for renters like me, regardless of length of tenancy, increasing the relocation payments and continuing funding the Emergency Housing Assistance Fund and providing outreach to those of us tenants for knowledgeability of our rights and protections. Most, four, most of our ADUs don't make it onto the market and most are not affordable to minimum wage workers and for a small family. These should be considered excess housing stock, not a primary source. Five, for every housing project approved, at least one caretaking and daycare service used is granted without a need for a variance. Each housing cycle needs to assume another generation of folks, both elderly and infant is going to be added into our mix who we will retain. Thank you so much for your service.
Thank you for your comment. So our next speaker is Pam Jones, followed by Marlene Santoyo. Pam, it looks like you might have put your hand down. Did you want to comment at this time?
Yes, I do. Yeah.
Go right ahead. Thank you.
Pam Jones, Bellhaven Neighborhood, Menlo Park, speaking for myself. Good evening, Vice Mayor Taylor, Councilmembers Combs, Nash and Mueller and staff. And thank you, Mayor Woolson, for attending the meeting even though you are not well. It is stated in the Environmental Justice Element, quote, policies addressing environmental justice in the existing general plan that address or are related to environmental justice are listed in table EJ-1. The table refers to policies that are in the 2016 Connect Menlo General Plan, 2016 Land Use Element, 2016 Circulation Element and the Open Space Conservation Noise and Safety Element from 2013. These documents are outdated and do not directly address the recommendations in the EJ. It may be that the EJ report was not viewed through a lens of equity. The recommendations in the EJ and SE should be addressed item by item. I am cognizant of the fact that we are very short on staff and as a resident, comparing documents is a lengthy task, which I'm finding out. I also urge the Council to include strong policies with some urgency in the, in the timeline for strong anti-displacement ordinance, extension of the relocation assistance for no cause eviction, education and outreach in person in the language culturally competent expert tenant education, affirming further fair housing by creating a citywide zoning of 60 units per acre with a density bonus for projects near high resource areas such as the downtown parking lot. The city of Menlo Park has the opportunity to set an example of how a city meets the RENA requirements, recognizes its obligation to lessen jobs, housing imbalance, which in part was created by the Connect Menlo General Plan as well as elevating environmental justice. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. So our next speaker is Marlene Santoyo, followed by Melissa Morris.
Hi, Councilmembers. Thank you for, thank you for all your work and I appreciate you taking our comments in. I want to relay and also amplify Adina's comment and Pam's comment as well as Karen's. The environmental justice element, there was a lot of outreach that was done in the short timeframes by local CPOs, which some that I'm a part of. And in those, we were able to hear directly from, from residents in person and through the surveys and all that will be, you can find in the environmental justice settlement. And some of the key findings from those that is reported, one of them being to distribute new housing throughout the city and in high resource areas. And as Pam mentioned, environmental justice is a lens that you use. And it's being, it has to also be reflected on all the other elements. And so the housing portion, the safe and sanitary homes, which is one of the seven goals, is being reflected in the housing element. So we have to make sure that the environmental justice P and key finding is actually being addressed in the housing element and that we have strong policies and programs to actually address it. And so one of the pieces that I'd like to also add is that we need to do more to affirm really further fair housing and recognize that our past planning does not incorporate that. And so we need to change for zoning and increase density in high resource areas. And the, the neighborhood of Bellhaven was recognized as a, or the Bellhaven community and bayfront area are underserved communities. And so we can't be placing high density in an under-resourced area that is not equitable. And so we need to find places outside of the area to, that can, that has a capacity to, to meet the needs of, of the people that we're now creating housing for. And also not disrupting the, like the lives of people that are being affected and adding to that disparity. It's meant to help and sorry, my time is up.
Thank you for your comment. And our next speaker will be And our next speaker will be Melissa Morris.
Good evening. My name is Melissa Morris. I am an attorney with the Public Interest Lab Project. I'm also a former renter in Menlo Park. My colleague Skylar Spear and I are submitting written comments about some of the more technical aspects of the housing element and revisions that are needed to achieve compliance with the statutory requirements. But as a general matter, I wanted to support the need for strong programs to promote the development of deeply affordable housing to confront the city's racial and economic segregation and to prevent the displacement of tenants. I echo requests from other commenters regarding the need for firm commitments to adopt tenant protections, like just cause eviction protections, and also to examine, not only in the environmental justice element, but also in the housing element, environmental justice issues affecting the community. The neighborhoods most impacted by pollution and other environmental hazards in Menlo Park are where the cities' lower-income and community doesn't color live. And it's important, not only that that's recognized in the housing element, but that the housing element includes programs to to address those disparities. Appreciate the work on this. I encourage the city to make the next draft available for public review and comment as soon as possible. And I look forward to speaking to you again. Thank you.
Thank you, Melissa. And I see no further hands and no further cards. So Vice Mayor, you may continue.
Thank you, Ms. Heron, and thank you for all of the public comments. Just had a few follow-up questions, and I believe Mr. Smith had this on his slide, and that is the date where the next draft will be released. Is that January 3rd?
So we would be in preparation for the meeting of January 12th by the, the joint meeting of the Housing Commission and Planning Commission. We would, we would be looking to release the final draft probably by the end of the previous week around January 6th.
Thank you, Mr. Smith. And I just wanted to follow up on a few questions from the public. And the first one is, why is the residential carve-outs? And I don't know if it's possible to actually put the attachment up on the screen that shows the residential carve-outs?
I can work on that in the background while I talk a little bit about it. So the idea behind the carve-out provision, generally, it applies to some of the larger sites that are on our housing elements, opportunity sites list. And the idea with those 10 parcels is that there may be a large parking lot. There may be a vacant area of the site that is currently undeveloped. And generally, these are between one and two acres in size on these parcels. And the idea would be to create an area, taking advantage of those large parking lots or vacant areas in order to provide affordable housing on those sites and then allow them to take advantage of what is called horizontal mixed use. So if there's an existing office building on the site, perhaps someone can walk to work from where they live, or if there's a shopping center on the site, and perhaps someone can walk out their door and they're close to retail and services that they would, that they would like to see. And so I can work on pulling up this, the list for you.
Thank you.
We also did hear from the from the development community, an interest in one to two-acre parcels being sort of the right size that they were looking for in order to develop affordable housing. And so making some of these parcels that may be 10 acres in size or somewhere around there a little bit more manageable with a piece that could be developed with housing was, was part of that idea as well.
Mr. Smith, do you remember which attachment it is?
It may have been actually in a, the list may have been in a previous staff report.
From the December 6th, possibly?
Possibly. Looking for it here. I actually have on a slide. Let me pull this up. So this is a written list of the sites.
Thank you. I appreciate the explanation. And if there aren't any follow-up questions from council on this specific topic, I'd like to go to Councilmember Mueller.
Actually, I have one question through the Vice Mayor. Yes. That is, Mr. Smith, could you please describe horizontal mixed use?
Right. The idea would be, I mean, so there's a potential, the, this overlay for carve-outs would be floating, so it could be applied anywhere on a site. But I think the idea originally was that it could take advantage of, like I said, parking lots or vacant areas of a site. The idea between, behind horizontal mixed use is that rather than requiring redevelopment of existing buildings, which can be costly, time-consuming, difficult to achieve, this horizontal mixed use idea would allow a residential use and maybe all residential right next door to a commercial use of some kind that wouldn't need to be necessarily removed and replaced or remodeled in order to make that happen.
Thank you.
Councilmember Mueller.
Yeah, I just wanted to make a quick statement tonight as it relates to the housing element and just get it over with. So I've heard from quite a few residents from District Five today as it relates to the housing element and future decisions of this council. And I think last night's decision by this council was a terrible mistake to exclude the representative District Five from voting who will represent this chick going forward. None of the other council members on this body were elected by residents of District Five, but for a small portion who are affected by redistricting. And to move the date for the vote on the appointment to a date, I will no longer be a council member, describes my district a voting voice in the process. Does incredible disservice to members appointed, as it may delegitimize their appointment in the eyes of the District Five voter and the decision-making process of this council, especially on close votes, including ultimately potential decisions made in this housing element. After talking with residents and upon reflection, I cannot actually think of a worse decision to be made on the heels of Measure B than for this council to decide to send the message that the elected, that the elected voice of a city council member of entire district can somehow be cast aside and is not necessary in the deliberations and vote on whom should represent their district in all future land use decisions, including ultimately the vote on the housing element. There are nine days between now and December 31st, and I strongly believe this council must reverse course and find time to make the decision in a way that respects District Five resident representation and the will of the votes to represent them in city council dismissed decision-making. This path of this council will lead members of the city unrepresented by an elected official who was elected in a, in a election they voted in for the first time in the city's history. I absolutely didn't, absolutely didn't want to exit the city council in this fashion, but upon reflection, I just, I really can't sit quietly on this issue, given the path we're going down, based on claims of inconvenient timing, nor can I abide by a decision that I believe seriously, upon reflection, is going to undermine this institution that I faithfully serve for the last decade. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Mueller. And it's my understanding, since that is not on the agenda, that we are unable to have a discussion as a council about it. Is that correct?
My comments were made in relationship to the validity of the decision-making process of the housing element.
Thank you for clarifying.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Yes, I think limiting any discussion to the housing element is necessary.
So I had a couple of other questions for Mr. Smith. This is a follow-up to public comment, and that is, there was a question about why we needed to update our EIR to do the upzoning?
So this is a piece that we're still admittedly looking into and analyzing, but in general, the EIR that we have developed for the project was looking at densities of up to 100 dwelling units per acre in the, in the specific plan area. And so if there were a desire by council to, to go above that or to modify where certain densities may be allowed, I would say we have, we've studied 4,000 units, as was stated. And so we do have some flexibility about, about where those, those may be able to happen. And, and the EIR also does identify a significant and unavoidable impact with regard to transportation. So I don't think that that would necessarily, we may need to do some additional analysis depending on what council determines, but I don't think it would change the impact finding there. But there, there may be a need for potentially an addendum or some other type of environmental document, just depending on how significantly we change. We, the council would want to change the zoning from what was studied and listed as part of the, the housing element as it stands now.
Thank you, Mr. Smith. And are there any follow-up questions from Mr. Smith from the council on this topic or any other?
I just wanted to confirm that. So what was studied was 100 dwelling units per acre?
Yes, we studied densities of up to 100 dwelling units per acre. I think actually in the, in the specific plan area, we had looked at densities either 80 or 100 dwelling units per acre. But I think overall, for the entire 4,000 units, we did study some at up to 100 dwelling units per acre. So like I said, there's some flexibility, but it would depend on how we modify the zoning to determine whether or not additional environmental review would be, would be necessary.
Thank you.
Vice Mayor Taylor, I had a question.
Yes, thank you.
So with regard to the carve-outs, it says like the intent would be to allow horizontal mixed uses where existing retail, commercial office, office buildings would be complemented by new housing with walkable access to the adjacent businesses. And so one of the 10 carve-out sites is the VA. Correct me if I'm wrong, but there are no existing retail, commercial office buildings to complement. So I know I've gotten something wrong. Explain, explain to me what's, what, what you're saying and how, and what's, what's the sort of in-go we're getting to with respect to like the VA parcel with that specific? Then, then I may be able to understand it writ large.
Sure. You've actually identified the one exception to the rule. For the VA site, there is a desire for a project on that site, and it would be about 2.1 acres in size. And so to acknowledge that particular project and development that's being proposed and indicate kind of, I believe it is on a currently vacant portion of that site. It did get lumped in, if you will, with those other sites. And, and that's kind of the, the story behind that one in particular.
Yeah, so but if it doesn't fit the definition, like why and how lump it in? Because it seems to go to the validity of the definition if you have exceptions.
Right. So this, this site is currently zoned for public facilities. And as such, I think that there are some regulations around use of residential on that site. And so to acknowledge sort of the residential use that's proposed here without rezoning the entire VA hospital site, we thought it would be more prudent just to, to sort of acknowledge that, that specific area and allow the housing to happen there.
But so then in having it as the carve-out is the only way to allow the housing?
Right. For this, yes. Essentially, the carve-out would be what would allow the housing, the affordable housing on that site.
In, without it being a carve-out, you can't have affordable housing. I thought that the carve-out was about allowing additional housing on the places where there were carve-outs. I didn't know that the carve-outs created created the, the, the housing. I thought that the carve-outs were about a structure that incentivized more housing.
So for a number of these sites, they are currently zoned for commercial uses. Some of them would be rezoned to allow for mixed uses. And so there could be a full-scale redevelopment of the site. Some of the parcels would not be rezoned in total. And so, for instance, there are a number of C1C sites, I believe, that are included as carve-out overlay sites. And for those sites, the C1C district would, would remain the same, but the overlay would allow housing to be developed on those sites where it otherwise wouldn't be allowed.
Okay. Well, I can follow up offline to get more information. I will say, I know this is a study session, so in a general sense, although again, like I will, I will educate myself more fully, there is concern if you have an exception to the carve-out of every other parcel fits along with the definition and explanation for the reason of the carve-out, and there is an exception, then again, like I said, it goes to the validity of the carve-out and is and so the question becomes, what is attempted to be achieved, and can we achieve it in a more transparent way? Where we're not having a scenario where, again, that parcel is, is, is associated with other parcels and don't, and doesn't fit the definition. And of course, there is affordable housing on, on the VA site already and, and a parcel, and there is support for more affordable housing. So this issue is not about, about support for affordable housing on, on the site. There was support from me and this general support from the community. I think for me, I think this was understanding fully, like what are we doing with that? And so this was something, again, like that stood out for me because, like I said, I know that there is no retail or commercial on that site to be walked, walked to. But again, this is a study session. Don't want to belabor the point. And, and maybe it's something I just need to be more fully educated on and up to speed, and I'll sort of reach out, like I said, offline.
Or Vice Mayor Taylor may perhaps just try to briefly help explain. And certainly, we can connect offline to Councilmember Combs. So Deanna Chausson is then Community Development Director. And as Mr. Smith mentioned, the site, the VA site is on public facilities. It is federally owned land, and technically, we don't have sort of the zoning. They don't, the VA does not come through the city processes when they develop. What we tried to do, similar to what was done in the last housing element cycle, was identify that there would be housing on the site. The VA went through was identify that there would be housing on the site. The VA went through an RFP process. They identified a preferred developer, mid-pen housing. And, you know, the former site was with core housing, and it was an opportunity to identify site, but there would be actually no formal rezoning of this particular site, similar to last last cycle. That was developed, it would remain public facilities, but with the understanding or the intent that it would be utilized for housing. And so perhaps the carve-out is not the right term, but it was like the whole entire VA site is not being zoned or thought of for housing. It is this smaller two-acre portion. That would be utilized for housing. So it's not technically being rezoned, but a smaller portion of the VA site would be used for affordable housing serving veterans.
Thanks, thanks.
Thank you, Ms. Chan.
Yes. So I have some other questions about zoning versus carve-out. I don't know if this is the right time to continue this conversation, or if we should come back to it.
Yes.
For our discussion.
Yes, it's fine.
So my question is, why, going back to what Ms. Dor was saying, and you asked, what is the difference between a carve-out and zoning if we were to zone with including, if we were to rezone, including residential? And I understand that a carve-out allows the existing building to stand and just to add housing in one portion of the lot. But how would that not also be accomplished with changing the zoning to, for example, office residential, in which case, if the office portion also was redeveloped, it would require residential in addition to the office?
So the carve-out sites are generally quite large. There are multiple acres in size, and if we were to rezone the entire site and make it applicable for residential uses, our understanding from talking with affordable housing developers and others is that sometimes those very large sites can become prohibitively expensive, and it might be more likely to be developed as market rate housing be more appealing to to that market. So the idea with the carve-out sites was to rezone a small, or not to rezone, but to allow an overlay of residential uses on top of the existing zoning that might drive more affordable housing for those sites.
So it's specifically to drive the affordable housing portion as opposed to housing generally?
That's the goal.
Thank you. That's great.
Thank you, Mr. Smith. And Councilmember Nash, did you have any other questions regarding zoning?
Your mouth, your speaker pieces down, but no, I do not have any more questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Mayor Willison, did you have any questions on zoning?
No, thank you, Vice Mayor.
Thank you. And I just wanted to go back to some of the questions in public comment. One of them was specific to a very short-term subcommittee that was created at the last meeting to look at the anti-displacement list that the city put together to figure out a way to prioritize, just because of the amount of work each item would require. And Mayor Willison and I did look at the list and did have some feedback for staff. Mayor Willison, did you have an opportunity to email that to staff so that it can be placed up on the screen to share with the council?
I believe the City Clerk, Heron, has that information.
Thank you.
Yes, I do. I will share that now.
Ms., it looks like that was public comment. I think that that was up on the screen. Essentially, Mayor Willison and I went through the the list that the staff provided and came up with some items that we felt could be done sooner than later. The intention is just to address displacement as quickly as possible, whatever is within the city's wheelhouse. And so that's what you see on the screen. I don't see a reason for me to actually read it to you, so let me know whenever you'd like to discuss it with us. Thank you.
Thank you. Steph acknowledges that we've received that, and we will certainly take counsel's direction.
Thank you. And if the if the council members can to look at it, and if you'd like to follow up with this right now in the meeting or later in the meeting about any questions that you have.
I will just add, thank you for doing this, and that looks good.
Thank you, Councilmember Nash. And if there isn't any other feedback or questions, we can move on. And I believe if I could have, actually, I have a question of the city attorney, and this has to do with funding these these options for displacement. And that is, is it possible to use BMR funding to fund any of these? If necessary, it's like the tenant relocation assistance.
Probably, but I I'm not able to answer that on the spot without reviewing our BMR trust fund guidelines.
Okay, thank you. I I believe one of the questions in the the previous staff report from December 6th asked what the funding source would be. So I just wanted to find out from staff if we also needed to make a recommendation, if you needed a recommendation from council.
That I would ask Assistant Community Development Director Chow to to respond.
Thank you, Vice Mayor Taylor. So I think as we explore these programs for consideration to bring back to City Council, and with the Housing Commission, we would need to look at the funding, as you mentioned, and so we can coordinate with the City Attorney's Office to see what funds could be applicable to help support some of these programs.
Thank you. And is there any information, and there may be in the Environmental Justice Element draft that would give us kind of an estimate, and I believe I've asked this question before, of how many folks have been displaced from Menlo Park in the past four years?
We could look into that. I think we have maybe some some references. I don't know off the top of my head, but we can, you can further look into.
Thank you. I'd appreciate it. I think the more data that we have to support why we need the measures would be helpful. Thank you. Were there any other questions that the council heard from public comment that you believe that we need to follow up on to clarify or ask questions of staff?
Not from the dais.
Thank you. Well, the next topic.
I I just wanted to confirm that, and and my apologies if I missed it, but the public comment from Ms. Jones, was that fully addressed? Because you had a question about like sort of the stats and lining up and 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 I just want to make sure that was. And if it wasn't, I missed it. My apologies.
No, it wasn't. It was not addressed, and and thank you. And the questions were around the environmental justice. How would the environmental justice policies address and relate to the, if I have this correct, and I'm not sure if staff picked up the question, relate to the 2016 Connect Menlo General Plan Update and the safety element of 2013? And then how will the, I wrote down, how will the update take shape to the new housing element? So once everything is updated, how will it take shape in in the document? So will it automatically change to the 2023? Or will it stay the 2016 and 2013? And that may be a little confusing, but that was the way that I understood her question.
I think for that question, I'd like to ask our our Housing Element Update consultants from M Group if they could give us a response.
Thanks, Tom. Thank you, Vice Mayor Taylor. Jeff Bradley with with M Group. I understand the question to be around consistency between the the Connect Menlo document and the new updates to the housing element and the new environmental justice element and revised safety element. Is that is that correct? Is that your understanding as well?
Yes.
Okay. So yeah, any 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 matters that would need to be internally consistent with the general plan, which is just a a basic requirement for general plans, that all the different elements be internally consistent with each other? And to the extent the Connect Menlo document is, in fact, the land use plan for the city, essentially, that we would, we would make sure that any changes there would be identified and and made in concert with this effort.
So if the housing element is being updated first and later, the the next two elements, the environmental justice and then the safety element? So how will that, how how will those two later documents take shape in the housing element that we're going to submit on January 31st?
Well, they are, they are three separate elements. So the housing element, as you mentioned, would would be reviewed and hopefully adopted by the City Council on January 31st. And then the safety element and the environmental justice element would follow, and we would make sure that all three are are consistent with each other.
So if, can you just explain a little bit on on how that would work moving forward? Does it change something specifically in the housing element once the environmental justice and safety element is updated?
We do, no, we do not envision immediate revisions needed to the housing element upon adoption of the the other two elements that we're talking about. They're, they are, they are distinct enough where the housing element is being crafted so that all of the follow-on policies and programs within the safety element and the environmental justice element will be freestanding and independent of the housing element, but but internally internally consistent at the policy level and the program level.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Are there any questions from council regarding the environmental justice or safety element from our consultant? From Mr. Bradley?
Not from the dais.
Thank you. Councilmember Combs, did, did, was there another part of the question that you heard that still needed to be answered from Ms. Jones?
I honestly don't know. I think, I think I, I, now that I can recall at the moment, things.
Thank you. At this time, Mr. Smith, can you put up on the slide just specifically what you needed feedback from from council? I I have quite a few notes. One was already was submitted by Mayor Willison. Thank you about the anti-displacement. The other had to do with the environmental justice piece, which I believe some of it has been answered. And then the third has to do with zoning and the site list. So I just wanted to go through what staff has asked for input from the council to make sure that we have, we're responding.
Thank you, Vice Mayor Taylor. We appreciate the feedback on the anti-displacement strategy as part of the housing element, and will utilize that feedback. Other things I think that we were generally interested in in understanding is if council believes that we are on sort of the right path forward with the zoning changes. Let me pull up quickly here our tentative milestones. So generally, we're looking at by January 31st, essentially having City Council take action on the subsequent environmental impact report and the housing element adoption, and then from there, spending some more time gathering feedback and addressing environmental justice and safety elements through community meetings and other other forms of outreach. And then continuing on in 2023 with advancement of the zoning changes that were described in the report and and checking in with council and the community to make sure that we we are remaining on track and that those would be eventually adopted later in in 2023.
Thank you. And I I have a question, Mr. Smith, about about how to encourage homeownership through whether it's the affordable units or the market rate, how how that could be possible through this this process?
We have looked at, so specific, specifically, we've, we've looked at the specific plan, and one concept that we looked at to encourage not just rental units, but also ownership units is to allow additional density and height or FAR bonuses above and beyond what would be allowed at the at the base and bonus level of development. If the developer agrees to provide a certain percentage of the units as affordable ownership units versus rental units. And so that was one potential strategy that we had that we had considered, would welcome feedback on that or others as well that that may really spur some ownership opportunities as well.
And are there particular sites that are identified on the the list? Are there any sites that are identified that you think that might have a, where you might have a better opportunity of achieving that?
We hadn't gotten into selecting specific sites. We had looked at eight sub-districts, I believe, eight of 10 specific plan area sub-districts, and so allowing that widely to encourage the most usage that we could, we could possibly get in the specific plan area where we where we feel like the access to services and retail and transit is is most available.
Thank you. And I, and I just thought of a question that came in public comment, and that is, and it was my understanding that the site, the Flood School site was already included in the housing element, but there was a question to, just to confirm.
Right. Yes, the the Flood School site is included as an opportunity site in the housing and the housing element.
Thank you. And then another question that I had around zoning.
Vice Mayor, uh, Taylor?
Yes.
If you don't mind, as long as we're on the house, on the Flood School site, I would love to get some clarification as to what the status of the school site is, because there's been some, I believe there's some confusion as to whether or not it's an approved project. My understanding is we have yet to receive any proposed plans, but perhaps community development could But perhaps community development could give an overview as to what is the status of that site, please?
Sure. Assistant Community Development Director Chow, I would invite her back to, to discuss that.
Great. Thank you, Councilmember Nash. So you're correct that it is not an approved site. There would need to be some steps taken in order to provide housing or greater density housing at that particular site. So as Mr. Smith mentioned, this, the Flood School site is site number 38. It's one of our housing opportunity sites. The intent would be to rezone that to a higher density per the direction of the city council, looking at 20 dwellings to the acre. We would be looking to rezone the site R3, and also doing a text amendment to R3. So for sites that are greater than, say, two acres in size, it could accomplish it at 20 dwelling to the acre density. And I believe that's consistent with what the guidance was. And so we would need to rezone the property. We would need to do, the city would need to approve a text amendment to the R3 zoning, and then a development would need to be on file and work its way through its entitlement review process, which likely would be the planning commission as the decision-making body. So there are a number of steps that would need to happen before a development would occur, and each of those steps would involve, you know, an opportunity for public input.
Have any project plans been submitted to date?
No, there, there are no project plans on file.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Chow. And I will call on Mayor Willison.
Thank you, Vice Mayor Taylor. Were you asking another question? I just realized before the deep dive into flood.
No.
Okay. First, Vice Mayor Taylor, I want to thank you for leading the meeting, and I want to thank all the well wishes. I guess I scared everyone with my scary voice, as you can tell. I'm, I'm feeling a little bit better today. But I did prepare comments because I am doing better with reading stuff than having to think on the fly here. So I'm prepared to give some of my feedback about where we are right now, zoning and the housing element. And all this might sound a little bit like a monologue. I look forward to hearing colleagues' reactions. And I, I understand this is a conversation, so just bear with me for a few moments as I get through these. And some of these comments I gave on December 6th, but I just kind of wanted to, to frame it. So on December 6th, when we last met on this topic, I commented about HCD's letter that's from the state and our strategy to address the feedback and be able to adopt a compliant housing, housing element on January 31st. I noted that staff had successfully modified site feasibility adjustment factors to likely satisfy HCD's requirements, which is much appreciated. And to offset the subsequent reduction of units, they also changed the affordable housing calculations so that our city's affordable housing overlay would work additively with the state's density bonus law. All this meaning that more units could be possible on paper, and all this was done without having to identify additional opportunity sites. I really do remain appreciative to staff for finding a way to get where we need to be by January 31st. But I remain concerned that this is a somewhat risky strategy. As I mentioned on the 6th, we've not materially changed anything about the actual inputs in our housing element. So we do run a risk of the strategy not working, and if it doesn't, the stakes are quite high, both rather immediate and longer term. I truly hope we can maintain our local control and that our own self-certification on January 31st, that HCD agrees that we are in substantial compliance. I don't want to be subject to the builder's remedy or any of the lawsuits that may follow. This could obviously cost significant taxpayer dollars and legal fees, and with state housing laws becoming more sympathetic to those working to build housing, especially, especially affordable housing, this legal battle may, may not go in our favor in the end. So I also think that whether or not we're successful in our original submission for compliance, there's another threshold on a slightly longer time horizon that we need to be cognizant of, and that's SB 35. Submitting the housing element is only part of the equation. We have to show the state that we're permitting the housing we claimed we would be enabling. And halfway through the eight-year housing cycle, HCD will check in with cities. And if we're not showing our progress on our housing development, both with mercury and affordable, we could be subject to major streamlined projects. We're seeing this in Cupertino with Valco. The city didn't meet its housing targets, and so the developer could come in as long as its project was 50% affordable and have massive zoning. So the cycle six housing element has huge affordability housing arena targets from Menlo Park, much larger numbers, and showing that we're halfway towards our progress halfway through the cycle, that we're meeting our progress targets halfway through the cycle will be no easy task. Especially given that I think our strategy carries a little bit of risk. So this leads me to downtown and zoning. And I, I'm happy to see that staff has kind of, originally was on a path to submit the zoning updates concurrent with our January 31st adoption timeline, and I'm, I'm glad that's kind of no longer our plan, that we're going to give the zoning more time, because I don't believe it's ready for prime time. The height and density is outlined in the Planning Commission's October 14th staff report. I don't believe the recommendations will lead to any significant development in the downtown El Camino area. For those of us who have ridden, driven or biked on El Camino, the housing that's getting built on the peninsula are mostly projects known as five overs, typically five over ones, sometimes twos and threes, where the first story is concrete and above the concrete story, which is sometimes parking, are five stories of lumber. Anything higher requires a different type of construction, more for skyscrapers, and anything lower much of the time doesn't pencil out. And so those cities who are serious about enabling housing have much higher height limits, closer to 75 or 80 feet, not the 50 or 60 that were proposed in the recommendations to the Planning Commission on October 14th. And so if we stick with these shorter height limits, we'll likely get nothing or close to nothing. So I think we need to think about what, what actually gets built and what it takes to get that. And I, I've reread, you know, the downtown specific plan, talked to many residents, and I completely understand sensitivity is related to massing, modulation, public-facing facade and height. And I think that we can make things really beautiful and at a human street level that feels appropriate to people walking on the street and that want to enjoy a beautiful downtown by having really great design standards. Some of the feedback we hear is, is kind of in reaction to these straight-up tall, you know, five-over-one buildings that look very surgical, surgical, clinical, I guess. But we can make them more like, you know, a wedding cake. They can have lovely facade heights, especially when they're closer to existing residential, lower density, and have a more gradual rise. And I think we can use these design standards, and then we can be less prescriptive with our heights and densities. Even potentially if we come up with what height we all feel comfortable with, really kind of relook at our density limits and have more flexibility to invite new possibilities. Like I said, I think we can have height and density. That's beautiful if we do it right. For years, I've heard, and I'm sure we've all heard from residents, about the desire to have a vibrant downtown. And for years, we've all been told, you know, wait until the housing element or zoning will be reopened to address this pent-up desire. So I think we need to be bold with our zoning downtown. If we're incremental, I don't think we're going to get anything, and this is really our opportunity to tackle downtown, and it's, it's an opportunity I don't think we should waste. Even if, you know, you're not convinced that, or one might not be convinced that revitalizing downtown is a worthy goal right now. I do think that pursuing a, a higher density upzoning height in the downtown El Camino area will serve also as a backup and safeguard to this mid-cycle arena progress check from HCD. Right now, our strategy is kind of looking at these 100% affordable. And I, I don't know how likely it is that all those are going to develop, especially those on private land. So I think looking at a secondary strategy of inclusionary units through market development in the downtown specific plan area can, can really be important for us. I, I, it was a tremendous amount of work that went into these extra tables that staff provided tonight. And looking through these, it appears that they've kind of separated out, you know, high, medium and low priority. And I appreciate that we can kind of look through these in a thoughtful way throughout next year. And I'd like to, if, if staff feels comfortable waiting with the zoning past January 31st, so that we can have proper community outreach to get that done, I think that's really good. Especially if we can wait to make sure we're getting our affordable housing overlay done properly. I think that's going to be really important, that it's done at the right level, so we can show HCD our seriousness. Sorry, just bear with me. I also wanted to comment, in addition to the downtown specific plan area, there's a lot of mention in the staff report, my staff of this C2B zoning district, which is taking a lot of these smaller commercial districts and consolidating them into one larger C2B district. A lot of these, if you look at where they are, are some of our treasured neighborhood-serving retail. And I want to make sure as we move forward with looking to rezone those, that we don't erode those neighborhood-serving retail experiences. So while we all obviously want to build more housing, I don't think our residents would appreciate it if Willow Market was replaced by 100% residential. I think we need to be careful about making sure that we can retain those residential, those resident-serving businesses there. And I think that's really important. A lot of people talk about the 15-minute city where, you know, an ice cream cone is a short walk away for, for many of us, and I think getting those C2B areas right is, is important to realize that. So I, I talked a little bit about downtown, but I was talking mostly about the non-public parking lots. For the parking lots, I think we really need to tackle those right away, as we said before. We need to determine which of those lots make most sense. We're, we're, we're claiming we're going to get a big yield out of them. And this is where I think that this really needs to be a priority, not just the parking lots, but downtown in general and the zoning. And as we move into 2023 and goal-setting, I would like the council to strongly consider downtown and this rezoning and these parking lots as our major effort. One last thing is looking to increase our inclusionary requirement, especially if we're offering quite a bit more height and density and zoning from 15% to 20% to, to get that yield. And I want to say just one more thing about the zoning exercise that I hope we're about to collectively embark on as a community is that, you know, we have an opportunity here, but we also still have the statutory requirement. So I think we need to be really careful setting the expectation for the public that as we look to kind of upzone, there is going to be a floor that we can't go backwards on. And it's probably not, and it's not necessarily what was in the downtown specific plan. So the downtown specific plan was one floor, then staff recommended an incremental upzoning in the, in the Planning Commission's staff report of another floor. And then what I'm suggesting is we should have a broader conversation about if there's even additional upzoning needed to actually yield the development that will revitalize our downtown. So I just wanted to set that expectation with the community, that we're all going to have to work together and get creative and really weigh these trade-offs. But that we should be really rethinking this village character, not to not have a village, but what does the village really mean and what do we really want? And when, when I think about, you know, we've talked about this before, when people travel out of the country and they go to places and they enjoy walking around and eating at cafes and, and staying above a cute boutique or whatever, and that, that's what we're talking about here, but it does, it does require density and a different way of thinking. So I think if we remain open-minded and forward-thinking, we can really have something beautiful. So I'm excited about the possibilities that lay ahead, and I think the zoning is, is really going to be critical. Those are my comments. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Willison. And is there any follow-up comments or questions about Mayor Willison's statement from council?
I'd actually be very interested in hearing what Councilmember Mueller thinks of it, given that this will probably be our last housing element meeting in which he is sitting.
I made my statement for the evening.
Vice Mayor, this is true. So the mayor said a lot, and I, I don't know if, if, as I sit here, I'm, I'm able to sort of respond thoughtfully to, to all of the, the things that she, she mentioned. What I would say though is that, and where my caution is, is that, again, this is a zoning exercise. This is not a construction exercise. It's not a development exercise. It's a zoning exercise. And then there needs to be actual other parties that do the construction and do the development. And we can create through zoning an environment that makes that more likely. But there are other factors that we don't have any control over that may even be more important, like larger economic factors, supply chain factors, human capital factors. All, all of that could play a role, and so I am hesitant to engage in this sort of exercise of moving the goalpost based on some idea that this is going to result in, is more likely to result in, in in a certain outcome. And, and so that, for, for me, that's, that's where, where I'm at, because you can, again, there certainly is a, a zoning change we could make that could very much guarantee development. But would that development represent the community? Would it adequately, adequately in, in, in my mind, be reflective of, of where we're getting, where we want to get? And so it's a balancing act, right? It, it, it's a balancing act of, of between having development or trying to incentivize development that that, that, that results in, in additional housing, specifically additional affordable housing, but also not getting to incentivizing development, which we think does not fit appropriately with, with, with the city. And so for, for me, as I sit here, that, that, that is, you, you know, that is my, my concern that, that we're, we're moving the goalposts, one, to a scenario and, and outcomes that I, I don't, that a lot of the community would say are, are, are sort of not reflective of, of where we want, want to go, and that even in that process And that even in that process, like, there is no guarantee, right? That, that we're going to get, get where, where we want. And, and then this, this idea of like, well, you, you know, we're going to get to builders' remedy, well, they're going to do this, 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 you know, this four-year check-in. I mean, to me, again, that becomes a point of where you're, 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 you know, you're sort of shadow boxing. It, it is, it is not, I think, something that, you know, I'm personally interested in engaging in. I, I, I think this staff has done yeoman's work and presented what I think is, is a legitimate invalid housing element, one that pushes us, but also, I think, reflects the character of, of the community. And, and like I said, I'm, again, more hesitant to engage in, again, lots of changes. One, when I say like, I don't know that the outcomes are one that I like. And two, there's no guarantee that we're going to get those outcomes or that, that we're, we're going to, in, in some way, protect ourselves from, from what we think of might be, be negative outcomes. And, and I think if you look at a lot of the, the scenarios where there has been pushback from the state or HCD Valco, some other examples, those are scenarios where city councils took opposing positions, really sort of oppositional positions to development. Like, right, where, where really they said, like, no, they, they became barriers to development. That is far, far from the situation that, that we're, we're engaged in here. No one, the state or any other stakeholder, any observer can say that the housing element we're producing or the engagement from Mellow Park has won that has, has been a barrier to development or one has taken it on as a sort of oppositional force. So those are my thoughts.
Thank you, Councilmember Combs.
So Vice Mayor Taylor, I will go next, if that's okay?
Yes.
Thank you. I also am, I need to, very honestly, I'd like to see something in writing of, or just to get more information about, from Mayor Willison. And I really appreciate the intent and all the effort, Mayor Willison, that you have put into this. But I, I, I am not there, I will tell you. I don't think that the residents that I've talked to, I, some certainly are. Some certainly think that at this moment, without even going further, we're not, that we are trying to do too much. But I think the most people are, would be in the middle and need more discussion about zoning and heights and density. I think that what the city has suggested at this point, what staff has suggested is a good place to to start. I am not willing to, I, I think going above five stories is would take a lot of conversation. I am not there. I do understand the need to incentivize building. And from my discussions with some of the, some property owners downtown, it's, one of the biggest issues is that they are small lots and that they will have to combine them in order to make a viable project. And I think that they, the ones that I spoke to were pretty excited by the idea, not of going up to five stories, but even if going four stories. Certainly not above, anyway, I think that we really, this takes a lot more discussion. And it's not something that we can address at this point. But I guess I do want to note my hesitation with traveling down this path at this point. I would, I do believe we need to aggressively go for the parking lots and putting affordable housing on city-owned parking lots. I agree that that should be a priority for the city this coming year. And if, in fact, we get feedback that we need a different different height, density, whatever, to make it viable, I think that's when I would be, would want to entertain a change in our existing specifications and have a strong conversation with, with lots of community involvement. I do have some other thoughts, but I will let council member, but they are not, they are on different topics than what, what Mayor Willis brought up. So I will let Vice Mayor Taylor respond first. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Nash. And, and, and at this time, I, I took some notes, Mayor Willison, of, of what you shared. And I, at this moment, would need to actually just digest it. I do appreciate you talking about making downtown a priority, which I'm sure we'll get into more of a discussion about that in the new year. And as far as the, he brought up state density bonus. What else? The non-public parking lots, increasing inclusionary and, and doing zoning exercises and, and looking at additional upzoning if needed. There is definitely a lot there. And I, I just think that we need, we need to keep that in discussion, but is it time for it now? Is, is my question. And I know that, I mean, I could go to my list as well of things that I would like to see, which probably will not get support, but I will still be bringing it up. But I do, I do appreciate you having, one, is you have literally dove into all of these land use, including the Connect Mellow and also the downtown specific plan, along with the housing element, environmental justice and safety element, and making your recommendations based on what you have read and how you see the city moving forward, especially to address not just its housing needs, but also looking at services that come along with the housing. So I do appreciate that. And, and at this time, and, and just to follow up on, on both Councilmember Combs and Councilmember Nash's statement, I do support building on the parking structure, on the parking lots. But just wanted to find out as far as the zoning. Councilmember Nash, you brought up, you said aggressively build on the parking lots. You didn't say the unit size, is that sixty units an acre? Or if you had a number, or if it was just build?
So my understanding is that we are with the affordable housing overlay, that it can go up to ninety-nine units per acre. I know that there is, and I guess I'm looking to staff that the downtown is not expected to build as much. So I know that, I believe that that just affects how many units we can include in our housing element as opposed to what actually is available to build there. But I would like clarification, please.
Through Vice Mayor Taylor, if I may. Yes, we, we have included a number, and I believe it's three hundred and forty-five units in our, in our housing element. That is considering sort of, there's some, some various factors that HCD wants us to use to discount those numbers of units. And so the three hundred and forty-five units is what we're including for HCD. It doesn't include like the, the potential for state density bonus to apply above and beyond that. There's also AB sixteen, seventeen sixty-three that allows one hundred percent affordable projects to have unlimited density and a height increase of up to three stories or thirty-three feet. So there, there are certain mechanisms that could be used to increase the number of units on the sites. But for the purposes of counting the units for HCD, we're, we're discounting them pretty significantly to get to that three hundred and forty-five. So I believe the downtown zoning sub-district was looking at something like sixty dwelling units per acre. But there are various density bonuses and state laws that could come into effect that would allow it to be significantly higher than that.
When I was reading the report, my understanding was that with all the housing overlays, if one were to take advantage of both the city affordable housing overlay and the state density bonus, that that would, that would be a cap of ninety-nine units per acre, is that correct? Or can it go beyond that?
That is correct, although I would say the, the specific plant, well, any area within a half mile of the Caltrain station, it's a little bit unique in that it can use recent state law in order to, to have essentially unlimited density. And so that, that would need to be taken into account.
And with unlimited density, does that mean unlimited height?
No, it would be an additional three stories or thirty-three feet above what would be allowed at the maximum by the zoning.
All right. So Vice Mayor Taylor, as far as when I say aggressively, I actually don't know exactly what I said, but aggressively pursue the downtown parking. I think that that is our best available option for getting affordable housing, which the city needs, our residents need, and which we need to do for the state requirements. So that's my, that was my intent, was that I believe that we have to pursue that with all vigor to get this started and get some affordable housing built there. And I know that there are some hurdles in the process. I guess one other comment I want to acknowledge that Mayor, Mayor Willison did point out that we can do the height and the density beautifully. And I do want to acknowledge that and raise that issue or just point that out. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Nash. Mayor Willison?
Thank you for, to my colleagues for doing your best to digest a lot of information that I threw at you. And for the members of the public, this is just an example of the Brown Act in action, where we have not been able to discuss this at all with each other. And so this is the first time my colleagues are hearing my thoughts on this. And it is a lot to take in at once. Just a couple of clarifications. I, I am acknowledging and in full support of community outreach prior to any rezoning, which is why I'm, I'm very happy that the staff pivoted or seems to be pivoting from the strategy of trying to concurrently and immediately adopt the zoning changes on January thirty-first and instead is taking what HCD is giving, which is one to three years to do that work, the rezoning. And that really gives us the time, I think, we need to present to the community the trade-offs with this downtown revitalization. As you further digest my comments and, and, and reflect, one thing I, I did over the past month is talk to several developers about, about density and what it would take to incentivize a developer to go downtown and potentially knock on doors to look at parcel consolidation in order to build. And in order to make that worth their while, again, it goes back to the type of construction that is penciling now for the development community. So I think it kind of boils down to a trade-off, not necessarily of us getting to decide, oh, three stories or four stories is our sweet spot that, that is, is like, is what we want. But kind of the status quo of our downtown or this opportunity to revitalize with this kind of first-floor retail, maybe second-floor office, and then housing above. And that's where it takes that extra height and density to make that happen. So I just think it's a worthwhile conversation with our community, given where our downtown is right now. So many conversations from residents about, you know, what's going on with downtown. And I think for us to have the greatest impact in the downtown of our future, making that kind of walkable, livable, exciting place that people of all generations can, can enjoy. It's through zoning that we have those levers. So I completely respect where you all are. I'm not looking to do anything immediately. This would be a transparent, public process. I hope you can continue to consider what the vision I've put out as we go into goal-setting and, and have further discussions about this. And I, again, thank you for your listening.
Thank you, Mayor Willison. And at this time, I'd like to take a brief break, about a ten-minute break. Thank you, Mayor Willison. And at this time, I'd like to take a brief break, about a ten minute break. Thank you, Mayor Willison. And at this time, I'd like to take a brief break, about a ten minute break. Thank you, Mayor Willison. And at this time, I'd like to take a brief break, about a ten minute break. Thank you, Mayor Willison. And at this time, I'd like to take a brief break, about a ten minute break. to do a fifty fifty project, I think that would be beneficial.
Yeah. And if I may, Vice Mayor, of course, with city owned property, the city has more ability to direct the use of that property as the property owner.
Thank you. Let's see. I had one other question, and this is on attachment E, Mr. Smith. And and that is just just a question about, this one says proposed general plan map and text amendments. And so it has on here for table one to update land use designation in zoning districts to make the new OR zoning district a bayfront, a bayfront area land use. Can you can you explain that?
Sure. So there's there's one area right now that's currently zoned for office with no allowance for bonus level development on those sites. And that is south of US one oh one. And so the concept there was to take a couple of those larger blocks and provide an allowance for housing on those sites at the base, essentially similar to what's allowed for the RMU zoning, but only at the base level, so twenty to thirty dwelling units per acre, not up to the one hundred dwelling units per acre allowed at the bonus level in RMU. And there are a number of housing element opportunity sites that were identified in that area. And so that was sort of the the impetus behind that.
And and it was my understanding that that no sites in in District One were going to be listed for the housing element other than, I believe, Pierce Road?
That's that's correct.
So is that? Go ahead.
Sorry, th- those sites would be within Council District Two, I believe.
These sites. And then question. Do you have a, is there a map? Can you direct me to the the map in the staff report?
A map of, sorry, of the
Of this site? Or the sites that are listed on on E, Attachment E?
I believe I can pull it up on a slide so I can present it here.
Thank you.
So essentially, it's, uh, this is US one oh one, Marsh Road on the left side of what you see here. And so this area bounded in green, generally Bohannon Drive and Scott Drive and Marsh Road, those blocks would be rezoned from office to office residential.
Thank you. Appreciate you putting the map up.
Sure.
Can I just, since
Yes.
Thank you. I'm understanding to
Okay, having our city council back on our in-person and virtual days. Vice Mayor, you may reconvene the meeting.
Thank you, City Clerk Karen. And I believe we were at Councilmember Nash. I believe that's where we left off, or was it Mayor Willison? I'm sorry, City Clerk Karen, can you remind us?
Yes, I believe the mayor had just finished some statements. So if there's anything else from council at the time, or we can maybe call staff back and see if there is something that they're still needing, or if there's other council discussion.
Thank you. And actually, that's a great idea, Mr. Smith, or our Assistant Community Development Director, but it would be great to kind of follow up. I remember the, the, the statement that you were asking is just a path forward with zoning changes. And just wanted to find out if there was anything else that you needed to hear from council, or had any follow-up questions.
Thank you, Vice Mayor Taylor. No, as I reiterated, we really just wanted to make sure that we should, that we as staff and as a team should be focused on the housing element adoption right now and moving forward with that process, finalizing the subsequent EIR and getting to the January 31st deadline, and then spending some more time with the community and, and with council, getting the zoning changes right, and also working on the environmental justice and safety elements. And so if, if that understanding is correct, then I think we have the information that, that we need for this evening, at least.
Thank you. And I actually have a, a follow-up question, Mr. Smith, and this is around zoning with a commercial and office. Is it possible to require that commercial, commercial and office include housing? So it's...
I, I think that that is a provision that, that could be looked into. I would say we haven't, when we've done outreach to property owners at this time, we have not indicated any sort of mandatory requirements. And so that would be definitely something that we would need to, to make property owners aware of is, is future requirements and how that might relate to any development plans that they would be considering. I don't know if Assistant Community Development Director Chow would like to add anything else to that.
Thank you, Mr. Smith and Vice Mayor Taylor. So I, I think that is, as Mr. Smith mentioned, something that we could explore, hasn't been discussed yet, just as a kind of a reference point, though, the RMU district in the Bayfront area does require housing first, and then only when housing is provided, then non-residential uses could be added. So sort of flipping around versus like if you add commercial, you need to have housing, it's sort of the flip is housing first could be housing only, and then you would add commercials. So that, that could be a reference, not necessarily a model that has to be replicated, but something that maybe something to consider if that is of interest. But that's something that we have not explored. But we do hear the mayor's concerns or comments regarding the need to maintain some of the commercial uses, the small commercial-serving retail uses that line some of our neighborhoods. And so, you know, how do we make sure that we keep the services needed, but then to produce the mixed use, produce the housing to accompany that?
Thank you. And, and I have another question, and this is, is just around, and this may be a little ambitious, but who knows which developer may even be considering. But looking at doing a 50/50, where it's 50% affordable, 50% market rate with a set aside for city staff possibly, but just trying to look at, and even possibly on the parking lots. Do you see that as a possibility potential, or is that something that staff has already looked into?
Requiring some, to just to clarify, to require some level of greater affordability than our inclusionary requirement?
Yes.
So that is not something that I believe we have contemplated. I, I might even ask for attorneys if we need to do something more to require the greater than our existing 15% inclusionary zoning. I've heard tonight that there was interest in 20%. That is something that we can explore as we evaluate our BMR guidelines, which is a program in our housing element, but to zone for that kind of break, or maybe our, I saw Mary Wagner, who was with our attorney's office, if she has anything more to add regarding the ability to, to do that.
Thank you, Vice Mayor, members of the council. And I concur with Ms. Chow's statements, and would just add that, you know, we would need to look into that a little bit further for you as well in order to explore the requirements around deeper affordability, or deeper number of units that are affordable, and, and how we could present that to you, you know, given the, all the stat, applicable statutes and other requirements.
Thank you. I, I think it's a, a great opportunity, because I know that there's funding coming from the state come in the new year that's looking at production. And so if there's any possibility, especially with city-owned land, to do a 50/50 project, I think that would be beneficial.
Yeah. And if I may, Vice Mayor, of course, with city-owned property, the city has more ability to direct the use of that property as the property owner.
Thank you. Let's see, I had one other question, and this is on attachment E, Mr. Smith. And, and that is just, just a question about, this one says proposed general plan map and text amendments. And so it has on here for table one, to update land use designation in zoning districts, to make the new OR zoning district a Bayfront, a Bayfront area land use. Can, can you explain that?
Sure. So there's, there's one area right now that's currently zoned for office with no allowance for bonus level development on those sites. And that is south of US 101. And so the concept there was to take a couple of those larger blocks and provide an allowance for housing on those sites at the base, essentially similar to what's allowed for the RMU zoning, but only at the base level. So 20 to 30 dwelling units per acre, not up to the 100 dwelling units per acre, allowed at the bonus level in RMU. And there are a number of housing element opportunity sites that were identified in that area. And so that was sort of the, the impetus behind that.
And, and it was my understanding that, that no sites in, in District One were going to be listed for the housing element, other than, I believe, Pierce Road?
That's, that's correct.
So is that, go ahead.
Sorry, th- those sites would be within Council District Two, I believe.
These sites, and then some other question. Do you have a, is there a map? Can you direct me to the, the map in the staff report?
A map of, sorry, of the, oh...
Of this site?
Let me see.
Or, or the sites that are listed on, on E, Attachment E?
I believe I can pull it up on a slide, so I can present it here.
Thank you.
So essentially, it's, this is US 101, Marsh Road on the left side of what you see here. And so this area bounded in green, generally Bohannon Drive and Scott Drive and Marsh Road, those blocks would be rezoned from office to office residential.
Thank you. Appreciate you putting the map up.
Sure.
Can I just, since...
Yes.
Thank you. I'm understanding too, because a prior meeting, there was a decision not to have that included. And so is that included now?
There were certain sites that were identified in a, in a previous list of opportunity sites that were removed, but there are still a number of sites that, that council wished to remain on the list that are in that area. And so I believe there may be six or, or seven in that particular area.
So when was it that council expressed the desire that some remain in? Because I, I thought that, that at, at the time of decision, the only memory I recall is, is that those weren't going to be opportunity sites. And so was there some subsequent meeting where the decision was made that they would be opportunity sites?
Believe that they were all, I believe that they were included on the list originally. There may have been, and I apologize off the top of my head, I can't remember the exact number. They may, there may have been approximately nine or 10 sites in that particular area. Council expressed interest in removing three of those, and then the remainder were, were left on the list.
So why, why did the council remove three?
Need to look back, not entirely sure what the
Distinction. Don't be frank, that's not my recollection. But, but I can stand corrected. Because there was a discussion with, at the time, Mayor Nash about the density needed there, about how it would be a production of, of market rate. I, I, and I, I just don't like, as I sit here, it's I, I don't see what, what the rationale, why we would remove some of the parcels or not. I don't remember discussion, but if, if someone can, could help me, like, sort of, like, what would be the rationale by, behind us making a decision to remove some, and not all, or keep, keep some? And again, my recollection was that, that the area in, in its entirety was, was, was not going to be identified as opportunity site. Because the, the discussion I remember having at the time was that it, it concentrates, if, if, if all of our, if, of a lot of the underlying foundation of this housing element was that there was historic concentration of high-density housing in District One. And that, that was a, a those outcomes were ones that we found ultimately sort of problematic as it relates to balancing housing across the city, that sort of then having housing right across the freeway from where we said that, that historically there had been an imbalance in creating lots of high-density housing seems to not to sort, sort of be logical to me. So, so again, that's what I remember, the underpinnings of that conversation. And so I don't see how you get from that to, well, we removed three, but we kept six or something like that.
So we're through Vice, Vice Mayor, if I may. We're, we're pulling up the information here live, but I believe that these three sites in particular that were removed were 1,000 Marsh Road, 3885 Bohannon Drive, and 4065 Campbell Avenue. And they were removed specifically because the property owner stated disinterest in housing development, unless much higher densities were, would, would be allowed. And so there was a vote of council on this, and three directed removal and two were in favor of keeping them. They were sites 65, 66, and 73 originally on the list.
So again, like I, again, this is my, my, maybe my misremembering of, of the scenario, because I, I thought at that point we were voting about all of the parcels in that area. Because even, again, it goes back to like, even if it, a, a property owner said that like, oh, this density isn't enough to incentivize, then there still would be no harm in us keeping it as, as an opportunity site, especially if, if, if all of the parcels around it. I mean, it, it just, it, it seemed like at that point, you're saying like, council acted because a developer said that it wasn't the density that they needed. And, and that has never driven any action that I've taken from the, this dais that, that I, I was going to necessarily be responding to, to developer action. Again, I, I thought that there was a more sort of fundamental discussion being had about where, where we were sort of zoning for high-density housing in the city.
Thank you, Councilmember Combs.
Thank you, Councilmember Combs. I honestly do not remember the full discussion. But Mr. Smith, can you give us a, a date on when the council decision was made? And I'll go back after the meeting and re, and re-watch the meeting.
Yes, it was June 6th of this year.
Thank you.
And I do remember some discussion about that this area was, I believe, in the Redwood City School District. So there was some concern about affirmatively furthering fair housing. But I don't remember more than that.
Yeah, I do remember that also came up, up too. Again, I guess, again, maybe not me not appropriate, fully understanding the discussion, again, like I, or what the council action and what the staff direction was looking at. Again, I understood that we were talking about this area writ large. And, and if we go back, all of the constant conversation was about the area writ large. It, it, it was not a conversation that parses out. You, you know, some parcels there and, and not. And so, but, but I, I will go back myself and, and, and look at that. But, but I can, I can say that from the tenor of the discussion, I don't think, what I do remember is, is I don't think that, that that discussion would lead to a scenario where we say that like, hey, some of the parcels over here are in, and some are, are out. I, I think that discussion was, was centered around the entirety of that area. That I definitely know.
Thank you, Councilmember Combs.
Really quickly, since I, I have, I have, I also just wanted to say, in, in response to the, you know, Mayor Willison's last, last comment, I, I just want to say, I'm, I'm very much in favor of the idea of like, what are the appropriate lovers that, that need to be put in place as it relates to sort of incentivizing and, and revitalizing, like sort of downtown, downtown proper, like Santa Cruz, like what, what that looks like. I'm, I know that's not specifically a, a housing element discussion at, at the moment, but what, what that looks like in, in engaging in conversations with, with, with property owners, with, you know, potential property owners, developers, with the community. It is something, again, like I say, that I am, I'm, I'm very much interested in, in, in exploring, because yeah, it has been, it, it, it has been, you, you know, getting downtown proper revitalized has been our Moby Dick. It, it is, it is something that has been elusive and out there, and we've just not been able to, to put together, I, I think, the right structure, the, the right engagement, the right additional sort of stakeholders from the private sector to make that happen. And, and just, you know, again, in response to the mayor's comments, I, I'm, I'm very much interested in engaging in that discussion.
And if I may?
Yes.
Just to expand on that, very much agree. And one of the pieces that I think would be a significant incentive would be removing parking, when I've talked to some downtown property owners. That is one of the pieces that they cite as a big deterrent at this point to developing the properties. So a discussion of parking requirements, especially downtown.
Thank you, Councilmember Nash and Councilmember Combs. And, and I agree, especially about revitalizing downtown. And now I will turn it over to the mayor.
Thank you, everybody. Just following up on this conversation about this area. I, I remember the conversation as well. I, I, I don't specifically remember. I, I think we're all going to go back and watch the video of what the direction was and whatever. But the re, the, then, the actual impact, so, so let's just play it out for a minute, though, and say that the intention was of those that voted for it, were to remove all those sites. My question to staff would be, I would imagine that would yield us a shortfall, well, it would reduce the number of opportunity sites. So then, I don't know if this is an, a question they can answer now, or when this comes back, or after everyone's watched the tape. But what impact would that have then on our, on our numbers, and what, what we need to submit to HCD? Removing those sites.
I'll wait, thank you.
If I'm, yeah, if I may clarify, the, is the question regarding all of the, the proposed area that I showed on the map, that would be zoned office residential?
I guess I would defer to Councilmember Combs and what his expectation was.
Yeah, I, I think my, my expectation is, yeah, understanding the impact of, of having those parcels that you have zoned opportunity sites, what is, is the expected production from there? Again, if, if we go back to the discussion that we had, part of the concern has historically been the concentration of high-density housing in a certain area of the city. And that, that is literally a stone's throw away from this, these parcels, like literally. So I, I don't, I, and, and so, like, again, if you look at like, um, again, the, the Haven developments, again, if you, you look at the stuff right across on, on Constitution, Commonwealth, I mean, so like, that was the global discussion I remember. And so irrespective of, of the mayor saying that like, well, what's the impact? I do then want to go back and say that like, the very fundamental thing we were talking about as part of this exercise wasn't, was an issue of equity, of spreading a development across the city is actually not really happening, right? And, 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 and it is, you, you know, if you move it a stone's throw in a sort of faux political division, and say that that then results as some distribution, then, then I, I just think that it is, it is, it's, it's a little kind of, it's, it's, it's a bit theater. And, and again, again, we will, obviously, now I'll go back and, and look at that, look at that, that, that discussion. But again, if it is the case that like, that there is impacts, and we say that, that those impacts override decisions in line with what I thought of that discussion is, then I do want some sort of explanation with why we think it is okay to, to concentrate the development in the same area, which I thought this exercise was a part of sort of not doing. I, I do think we have to go back and like, have that rationale and that discussion very clearly. And that, that it is, it is literally simply not about the concentration of housing in one area of the city. It literally is about the concentration of housing in, in sort of a made-up political boundary, like, right, of, of, of District One. And, and that's fine, but I do, I do think we have to, we have to recognize that. And, and I remember one of the things that, that I brought up in that discussion was that even if you look at like, what is it, like the Haven developments and, and some of the, the developments sort of right across the freeway on, on Marsh, that like, if you, if you look at those impacts, what I was, what I remember saying is that the impacts, as far as traffic, are actually greater to some of the communities along Bay Row, Laurel Lot, and Suburban Park than they are to, to Bellhaven. Because, because Marsh is, is a major thoroughfare for, for those communities, and not necessarily for, for, if you think of what is Bellhaven proper. And, and so I definitely remember having that discussion. So, so again, we can all go back and, and educate ourselves on, on what that discussion was, and, and what may have been the council intent. But I do think that we have to like, then be at least honest, again, that like, this exercise furthers the concentration of, of high-density housing in one, one part of the city, and, and really sort of continues to right the wrongs of prior housing elements.
Thank you, Councilmember Combs. And Mr. Smith, were, were you going to follow up?
Yes, Vice Mayor Taylor, thank you. I, we will go back certainly and, and listen back to the meeting and, and look at our notes from that. I would note, there was a question about how, how it would affect, how it would affect things if, if we were to remove those sites. And it's important to keep in mind that we did include a 30% buffer in planning for sites to, to make sure that if sites do come off the list, we have enough adequate sites that remain. So we will need to look into that a little bit more, but we did plan for that buffer early on. So we can, we can certainly get back to you with that information.
Thank you, Mr. Smith. And I have a hand up from Mayor Willison and then Councilmember Nash.
Thank you, Vice Mayor Taylor. And, and thank you again for leading this meeting. I, I just wanted to point out, I was simply asking the impact, because I, not to opine on the, the, the value of the, of whether the housing should go there or not. It was more just to, to understand the impact, so we could make a thoughtful decision if needed. And then I, I do want to point out that I was, I don't know, half hour, hour ago, talking about upzoning downtown to enable more housing. And I have been supportive of, of more housing at sites in District Three. So I, I think we do have to be mindful of, that housing needs to go somewhere. I'm supportive of it going, you know, near transit to revitalize our downtown. But I think we need to be thoughtful about putting limitations on feasibility or in places that we actually want to see it, spreading it out throughout the city in areas that can really be opportunities for us, especially as we're trying to affirmatively further fair housing and undo these past practices. So kind of going back to my earlier comment about downtown, I think it accomplishes a lot to, to really focus on that area. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Willison. Councilmember Nash?
Thank you. This whole discussion raises the issue to me of, of, well, I guess a couple of things. First is opportunity sites versus just general zoning. One of the things that I am concerned about is that we do look at zoning all across the city. And as Vice Mayor Taylor mentioned, I would like to have a discussion about changing all non-residential zoning to some sort of mixed-use zoning with retail and housing. One of the things that I don't want to see it, for example, is or at least, I guess I should say, that warrants more discussion, is if this area that we're talking about, whether or not it should be housing, now turns into much more office. So we could actually end up with large buildings there, but not housing people, and in fact, making our jobs housing imbalance worse. So I would like to look at how, at the zoning all over the city, and especially with Um, so I would like to look at how, at the zoning all over the city and especially, um, with the, what is driving, um, our need for housing, which is more offices, um, resulting in more jobs and workers who are not able to find housing um, in this city, especially housing that they can afford on their salaries in the city, their salaries or their hourly pay rate, I should mention. Um, and just how do we balance all of that? Um, along with that, I'd like to see, um, I'm trying to call it now, now that a jobs housing linkage, um, but an office housing linkage perhaps, or, uh, non-residential housing, non-residential residential linkage. Um, the idea being that jobs are good, but the, a lot of what comes with the jobs, um, is what, again, drives our housing prices, our traffic, um, all of, um, so, many of the concerns that um, we have. And so, I appreciate that staff put, um, this linkage into the staff report and would very much like to, um, see that proceed. I guess I'm wondering what the next step would be on something like that. Um, where we would, um, looking at two different pieces, one is, um, having residential required with all develop, on, in all zoning, uh, across the city. And the other would be possibly, um, having, implementing some sort of, um, linkage and how we would go about doing that, presumably there would be some threshold, um, under which it did not apply, over which it does. Um, what does that, how would we go about doing that? How is that possible? Is that something that, um, comes within this housing element or given that it's January thirty first is the deadline? That seems, um, like a big stretch.
Thank you, Vice Mayor Taylor and Councilmember Nash. So, in particular, those two program, uh, I, I, I would see those as potentially programs if that is something that the city council would like to add. Um, I think the, the second one, um, with the office linkage be, might be able to be explored as part of a, a broader, uh, consideration for our BMR guidelines. So, that might, we might be able to, um, add, modify our existing language in that program. Um, looking at, um, doing the zoning as part of, um, residential, making all of our non-residential zoning districts, a, a mixed use zoning district, excuse me, that might fit within one of our existing zoning programs, um, for the housing element. So, we may not need to add programs, but we might need to enhance the language if those are two things that the city council would like staff to explore as part of our, um, rezoning efforts and/or our, uh, review of the BMR guidelines.
Thank you, Ms. Chow. I appreciate the follow-up. Councilmember Nash, did you have any other, um, questions?
I did, thank you. Um, two other, well, I guess one question is just, um, on the office residential, the OR, which is being proposed, how does that work? Um, it, does that require residential with office, or is that just where one can do? It's available. And then I do have another question after that.
So, I, I think it could be structured either way. Um, we haven't actually developed the, the draft language for the ordinances yet. Um, it was something that we had in mind, and so that, that would be something that we would be interested in hearing from, from council if there's an interest one way or the other.
I would definitely be interested in requiring residential and allowing office. And I don't know what that breakdown would be, but basically, I, I think we need residential everywhere. I think the one piece that I would look at would be in District One. Um, where we know that there has been a tremendous amount of residential. But if we are getting office, I think that, um, we should be getting residential with the office, even in District One. Um, although I, I'd certainly be open to discussion on that. So, I don't know if anyone else wants to add anything before I have one last question.
I, I'll wait.
Thank you. Um, so my one last, um, question slash remark is currently, um, in Connect Menlo, and this is something which I believe also happens across the city, but, um, would like some clarification on that. We currently have something where we, um, when an office or light industrial square footage comes down and is replaced by residential square footage, that, that office square footage then goes into a bucket where it can be used elsewhere. And what I'd like to see is basically square footage is square footage regardless of use. It all, um, creates impacts on the community. And, um, so if light industrial is taken down and residential is put up, that, um, a square footage equals a square footage, and we do not bank the office space for another use at another location somewhere else. Thank you. And I guess I'm looking for a staff, um, feedback, whether that is something that is, uh, or how one would go about doing that.
So, to answer the question, yes, we, we do currently have sort of the system in place where under the general plan, there are certain, um, amounts of development that are sort of authorized for each of, each of the different land use areas. And so, our practice has been, um, to, to, if you will, as you said, bank, bank it back, um, when, when square footage is removed. Um, the way that the general plan counts residential is by units versus square footage. And so, um, there may be a bit of a challenge there in terms of equating units with commercial square footage that would be removed, but, um, I don't know if Ms. Chow would have anything else to add to that.
Thank you. Uh, I don't think I have anything more to add. I think, um, as Mr. Smith's method mentioned, as Councilmember Taylor mentioned, so the specific plan area and, um, the, the Bayfront area utilizes kind of that monitoring system of residential units and, uh, square footage. Um, and, and so, if that, but again, as Mr. Smith said, when we do residential units, it's, it's basically looking at the number of units versus square footage. They don't necessarily align. You could have one unit that's very large. You can have, you know, multiple units, um, that take up the same amount of square footage as, as one unit. So, if that's something that we want to explore, I think we'd have to see if is that really the right mechanism or what is the intent? And then we can, um, explore what might be the mechanism or the tracking system that would make the most sense.
Thank you, Ms. Chow. Uh, Councilmember Nash, did you have a, a follow-up?
I would be interested if you have any comments, but essentially, um, Vice Mayor Taylor, um, but essentially, the idea is that the community has, um, it just, it has created much more, um, development in the Bayfront area, um, because of that. And it's, um, because essentially you do, you never lose the office, or you eventually regain the office and you have, um, we have many, many units of residential going up, which also have traffic and, um, major impacts to the community and the surrounding area, so that it seems, um, that it would be worthwhile looking at that. And I guess, um, so that does not happen anywhere else in the city that is strictly, um, that is only with the Connect Menlo in the Bayfront area.
So, we also track in the specific plan area?
So, I would, I would like to look at it. I, I would be interested in looking at it in both areas.
Thank you, Councilmember Nash. And, and just for clarity, you'd be interested in looking at it, um, in both areas? To see if it is beneficial, to see the impacts, just trying to get some clarity.
Well, I would personally like to see, um, some assessment of what the impact, yes, what the impacts are of residential, um, versus office with the idea that, um, replacing the office or the commercial or light industrial, um, having that amount of space banked for later use while we're also building, um, massive amounts of, or, uh, large amounts of residential, which come with, um, significant, um, just size and massiveness, um, impacts to the community. That, yes, I think that, um, having those additive, um, is something that I would like to look at and see if it's something where we could have them replaced or at least look at the impact of, um, allowing the banking of office. And especially, again, as we look at what drives many of the concerns around our community, which is related to, um, new office and traffic and housing needs, um, and water use and all of, just how do, how do all of these impacts, um, how additive are they? Thank you.
Thank you for the clarity, Councilmember Nash. And I, I am in support of that. Um, just thinking about this, I, I go back to, to Councilmember Combs, um, referring to this as an exercise. Um, but, and it is an exercise in thinking about, um, zoning, um, and the need, um, and I'll say this specifically to District One, just thinking about, um, the impacts that we see currently and then the ones that are coming as soon as the three thousand four hundred and fifty-three units are completed, which will happen, um, over a period of, and I think at least three have broken ground over the next, um, you know, one to eight years possibly, um, if the supply chain and the labor force, um, is available. And so, um, I have to bring up, um, something that I've brought up, I think at least twice in the past four years, um, is the possibility of downzoning in District One and looking at, um, possibly a strategic plan that will be specific about what else is needed. Um, we're building a lot of housing in one area. Um, and there is very little services, at least on that side of the freeway. Um, so, I'm not sure, um, Councilmember Nash, you brought up, um, just something around zoning, um, and doing it citywide. Um, and this would include housing. Um, I'm not in support of any additional housing in District One at all, um, at this time. Um, until the three thousand four hundred and fifty-three units are completed, um, so that we see what the impacts are. Um, or there's another area of this city that's gonna absorb the same amount of units. Um, so, I'm just putting it out there, um, decrease density in density one and increase it outside, um, someplace else. So, that is one of my requests. And then I have, I believe, um, three more. And hopefully, we would have addressed, um, all of the, the staff's questions. So, and I will keep going unless someone wants to, um, stop and chime in on what I've just shared.
So, um, I, I'll chime in quickly, but I, I would say you should probably keep on going, like, through all your, but, but, but I will say, like, I'm very much supportive of, one, the idea, certainly not, uh, in- increasing density or housing as it relates to, to District One. Um, I, I, I think that there, there become legal complications regarding decreasing. But, I, I mean, I'm, I'm not the city's lawyer, but, but I'm totally with you on certainly not increasing. Um, there, there has been an imbalance, which I will very much, uh, acknowledge, um, maybe not that you needed. Um, and very much to your point, um, y- yes, the, um, l- looking at additional sort of um, infrastructure and amenities, um, as it relates to, um, to this area writ large, especially as, as more, as more housing is coming. I mean, and it's just very basic. It's, it's my understanding that, that there is actually, if you look at the Haven, um, Menlo Anton, that, those apartments, there is not actually a consistent sidewalk that gets those residents to Marsh Road. Um, and we put, huh, not we, but the council, the city, put hundreds of units over there. Um, and, and you can't even technically walk, walk to, to Marsh Road. So, a- and I only say that to, yeah, that's an indication that, that there has been a failing, like, right? With regards to, to thinking, um, like comprehensively and strategically, um, uh, a- about what happens and what's needed when you, when you, when you put a hundred, hundreds of units, um, in, in an area that has not had hundreds of units before. So, th- that's my thing. I, I don't know if, if Councilmember Nash wants to say, but after that, I am gonna shut up and I do think you should just go, go through your list.
Thank you, Councilmember Combs. Councilmember Nash?
I just want to agree with that and also say, we've also got a hotel coming over there now. Um, which, yes, there is very little, um, access from, by anything except a car. And we know what the traffic looks like over there. I guess I have one question, um, for staff, if you don't mind. And that's, um, my understanding is there's some thought about another residential, um, building going over near Haven. And I believe it's currently zoned for office. Um, is that correct? And how does that work with, uh, project or perhaps this isn't the time to raise that?
I can, I, I think I can, uh, start to answer that question and then, uh, Ms. Chow can help if, if needed. There is a parcel, um, at thirty-seven fifty Haven Avenue. Um, and I believe it has sort of, uh, split zoning, if you will, where part of it is zoned for residential mixed use. And then there's another part of it that I believe is zoned for offices. Um, and so, that project, um, I believe has been, been submitted. But, uh, it would need to go through environmental review above and beyond um, what was studied in, in Connect Menlo, um, because it is exceeding the, the, the number of units that were studied there. It is within the units that were included in the general plan. Um, but it does need its own independent environmental review. And so, it would be going through, through that process to study potential impacts.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Smith. I, I appreciate you, um, providing that information. And, um, I was too late to call up the project for the hotel. Um, because I just, I have concerns with, um, all the development that's happening. And let's see, I have one last, um, piece, and this is around the, um, environmental justice and safety element. Um, I, I do appreciate all the work that staff has done to bring us where we are. And I understand why the housing element, um, needs to come first, um, basically because of the mandate. Um, and I'm hoping that we can actually look at the, the environmental justice element, um, independently. Um, and then look at the safety element. I'm not sure, um, if that would extend the deadline, I mean, extend our timeline. That's definitely not my intention. Um, I basically want to be thorough. Um, what some of my community members are asking is that, um, we need to address, um, items, um, item by item, um, in the environmental justice piece. And I wanna allow enough time, um, for staff to have the capacity, but also the community, um, to have input as well. So, um, so that is my, my last request. And, um, and if I forgot anything, I will bring it up at our next meeting in the new year. And Councilmember Nash, I'm not sure if that's an old hand up or a new hand.
It's a new hand. I just was looking at my notes and the one other thing I would like to- It's a new hand. I just was looking at my notes, and the one other thing I would like to add or possibly ask other my colleagues is downtown parking lots, I would like to see, it is city on land. I would like to see that as 100% affordable, and I think there may have been some comments about it possibly not being 100%, but I'm certainly interested in that being as one of our few sites that we really have control over, being 100% affordable.
Thank you, Councilmember Nash, and I'm supportive. I was talking about the 50/50, but it didn't have to be specific to a city on land. I'm supportive of 100% affordable.
Vice Mayor, if I could use this as an opportunity to kind of chime in on kind of where we're at in sort of this, this portion of the item. So maybe I can use this one as an example, and then I'll, I'll go back to about four, for, for other items that have been discussed. So I appreciate the clarification from Councilmember Nash about the previous statement about 50/50 and the extent of affordability. I want to just take that as an example to see if that, that statement, that dialogue is actually being reflected in a document, mainly being the housing element document. Because if, if we can kind of track some of these statements to actual edits, that's, that's what will keep us on track for January 31st. If it's something that I'll say like a different bucket that we want to kind of keep a list and we'll track later to totally can respect and understand that, that I think we need to be explicit about those things, because we are on a very, very, very tight timeline for January 31st. So if I could use that as an example, I'd then say, I want to kind of clarify a little bit, because I think what we're trying to do, and Mr. Smith explained a little of this earlier, that there's, there's a potential for more housing units across the parking plazas. We're identifying through the HCD methodology, the 345 units. But I think what we're trying to structure, and some of this may be in my head, and some of it may be reflected in, in the draft documents, but the city, I think, is going to try to go through some sort of process where we're analyzing kind of what to do across the eight publicly owned parking plazas, what the best mix of use, uses are. Focus is totally on affordable housing. There may indeed be 100% affordable, but as we go through that process, there may actually be, you know, one portion here that may actually be perfect for 50/50 in this portion here, 100%. So I just want to make sure that through this sort of discussion that's happening, differentiating between like intent and prescribing things, and that's where, to ultimately get to where we want to be, we're going to need to be a little kind of precise in that. So if you could just clarify, like, a general intent, that's great. If it's that we're looking for edits on things, we probably need to know that. And so I can have maybe a couple more examples like that, where we may just need to, before we leave this evening, understand if it's a, if it's an idea that we're tracking versus something that we're going to go back into the document and try to make an edit. I have to go a little bit further on, on, on that.
Thank you, Mr. Murphy. Councilmember Nash?
I guess I am looking to staff to let us know what, where appropriate, where items go, what can go into the housing element, what does, you know, cannot. And regarding the 100% affordable housing for parking lots, I was thinking that we would set the, that would be the intention, but that we, you know, reality may be different. But if we don't strive for the 100%, then we are less likely to get there.
Great. So I would say like, if that's the clarification of the intent, I think that's sufficient. We'll double check if there's any place in the document where it needs to be clarified, but at the point in time when the city would start looking more closely at the parking plazas, the council's going to have the opportunity to review the documents that will express that further. So I would think that we'll, we'll double check from a staff perspective that we're not missing anything, but my, my gut feel is that we're not going to need to amend something in the document. And so as long as we kind of have that understanding, if we uncover something in the January timeframe, we can, we can do that. But leaving this evening, that may be something that we don't end up with an edit to. Okay, great. Okay, so I'm seeing a head nod from Councilmember Nash, and so then if I could just go through a couple more of the, the items that were stated, just to kind of see if there's something that staff is trying to track versus something that may truly necessitate a change to the document, because what I don't want to do is have the expectation that we're changing the document and it's not be changed in January, because we won't have time to react. Okay, so I'm just going to go back through, I'm going to probably go in reverse chronological order, because that's where, where my notes are. So just to, Councilmember Taylor made the statement about the environmental justice and safety elements, and that making sure that we have the adequate time, and if need be to even bifurcate further environmental justice from the safety elements, I think that's a kind of a procedural thing. It's not going to be a change to the housing element document, and we'll, we'll look into whether, I'll say the pros and cons of keeping them together or on two separate tracks, and we appreciate the environmental justice element would be the higher priority unless there's something from state law that we don't have right this second in front of us. So I think that's kind of intense. I just confirming that that's, that the rest of the council is good with that, that approach. Yeah, okay. So now moving back, let's see, so just, just for the benefit of the, of the, of the public, there is a project that's been on the books for quite a few years since 2013, probably for, it's evolved over the years for trying to get that sidewalk from Marsh Road to Haven, quite a few staffing challenges over the, the years on that, but it's getting closer, so at least it's, it's closer than some, some other ideas. So it's happy to figure out whatever we can do to kind of move that along. In terms of some of the potential zoning changes, I guess some of the items that Councilmember Vice Mayor Taylor just brought up about District One, I wouldn't mind seeing if there's anything from that that would be specifically reflected in the housing element versus topics for us to track separately. So I'm, one was about considering further downzoning was one. So I'm.
As we are upzoning other areas of the city, is that the time when we might possibly be able to downzone? In other words, I wouldn't want to wait on that. I understand it's a weighty discussion, but I wouldn't want to hold off on that discussion and then have missed an opportunity to sync it up with our upzoning.
Right. So I, I think that may require us to just, again, quite a bit of discussion last year about that. We could take one more look. I don't believe that's going to be something during the course of the the next month. So I, I, I think we'll look at what the potential options are. I don't think that'd be reflected in the housing element. Great. Seeing some head nods with that, just, okay. The I wrote down the strategic plan for additional services. That is one I would want us to just double check, and maybe it's called a slightly different type of plan, but confirming that there is the opportunity to look for where services can be located near, near housing. So that's one where I would just want to double check if there is anything in the, in the draft documents thus far. If that's something that we want to try to incorporate, or if that's a future item.
Mr. Murphy, I, I'm not sure that there is anything in the document. I was going to look back to see if there was anything in, in the general plan, but just that former into area, it's predominantly housing and commercial, and that's it. Commercial is in not community-serving items. So I'm not sure where, where the discussion lives. Is it a strategic plan, or is it something to do differently? So I'm just bringing it up, because it, it will definitely be an issue.
Great. So thank you for that. And so we'll, we'll look into that. My, my feeling is that that's probably going to be a separate thing that we would track. Then I think there's three last items. So the topic about the, again, specific to the square footage versus units, the term that was used was banking. I've historically thought of it as a net new monitoring. So happy to kind of get a little bit more information about that. Look at that. I don't believe that that's going to be something within the housing element document itself. So seeing a head nod from Vice, from, sorry, for everybody's titles changes from Councilmember Nash. So we'll, we'll keep that on a list, but not specific to the housing element. Then the other two items, I believe, Assistant Community Development Director Chow did talk to the potential related to the the office housing linkage and at some point requiring residential in all zoning districts. I think those are things that, that could be looked at in the housing element. So I think we can see if there's something in the, in the draft that could be modified to incorporate that language. So those are two things where I want to just make sure there's the consensus or majority of the council for us to, to invest into looking at those sort of modifications. So I'm seeing some head nods from those in attendance, and great. So we have at least, I see, I saw at least three head nods. Thank you. Great. So thank, that, that was helpful, I think, for, for, for me, I think staff, so I would just want to double check if staff had any other clarifications that we could get this evening.
Thank you, City Manager Murphy. I believe you covered eloquently all of the items that I had listed here and, in my notes. And so I believe we can take that and continue working ahead on the housing element.
Thank you, Mr. Murphy, and thank you, Mr. Smith, and just wanted to follow up with the council to see if there were other items pertaining to the housing element that you wanted to bring in discussion or needed, or have clarifying questions. Councilmember Nash?
When would it be a good time to discuss BMR requirements? Is that needed within the housing element? Again, I think staff is doing an amazing job turning these documents around, getting all this information. I don't want to add to the what is the workload. I also don't want to miss an opportunity.
So if I may, there is a program within the draft Housing Element Program H4A to amend the below-market rate inclusionary housing regulations, and one of the potential modifications listed, letter A, would be to increase the BMR requirement. And there's a number of other actions that would be up for consideration there as well. And so I think it would fit potentially under that, that program as something that we could analyze through the housing element cycle.
If I have a further question on that, can I take that offline? Basically, it is the possibility of looking at square footage in addition to number of units as being a trigger for BMR requirements. And I guess I'm looking, is that something which would be part of, again, is this a missed opportunity if I, if it's not brought up now, or will there be another opportunity that's not two years down the road?
Let's see, Vice Mayor, I can take a initial stab that I will, so in terms of some sort of change related to square footage related to the BMR program, I have a feeling that we're going to need to just double check where we're at with our next study and justification for things. So there may be the, the sequence and the tools that we'd need to potentially accomplish that, we may need to think through. So I think I just want to make sure that we understand what the idea, concept is, and then we probably need to report back on when exactly that could happen. So totally okay with some offline follow-up, so long as the, the, we've got the support of the majority of the council to kind of look in, into that. So is there more that needs to be articulated tonight about the idea?
If it would be helpful, I can try. Would, should I try like a one minute? So essentially what it is, is what this came about with is at 115 El Camino Real, we have a project that was is now a multi-use building with four condominiums, and it fell under the Menlo Park's five-unit trigger for BMR obligations. And yet it qualified for the State Housing Accountability Act, because the square footage of the residential is over two-thirds of the building. And it seems that, so from the, it, one unit is 2,000 square feet. Anyway, they're, they're very large, they're relatively large units that because they kept with large units, and the number four, it fell underneath our BMR requirement. This is probably rare. I don't know that it's worth doing a lot on this, but it was certainly something that was, stood out to me. This was in 2019. And it just, it seemed that if we could have some sort of trigger where the size of the, anyway, do you get the flavor of it?
Yes, that, that's helpful for me, and I do, going, going back in time to previous Nexus studies that I've, I've worked on, I have, I have a feeling that that's going to fit in well with the Nexus study. So I would say that that would probably be a good place for us to, to look into that.
Thank you. So again, if it doesn't, if it helps but doesn't add tremendously to the workload, I will leave that up to staff.
Great.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Nash. And did you have any other questions or comments?
No, thank you.
And I'll do one last round to see if council has anything else for staff regarding the housing element. And then a question for staff, if there's anything else that needs to be clarified.
No, we appreciate all the feedback that we've received this evening, and we'll continue to move forward with the draft of the housing element.
Thank you, Mr. Smith, and I'm very happy that I do, do not need to recap all of the discussion this evening. And at this time, this meeting is adjourned. Thank you.